Okay, it's six thirty, so we'll call a meeting to order, a regular city council meeting for March eighth. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, if you'd call a roll, please, sir.
Mayor Swenson?
Here.
Councillor Boarder? Councillor Tate?
Here.
Councillor Bockel?
Here.
Councillor Hanson?
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We do have one small change to the agenda. There's, there's a new item under new business, and that's the limited use permit that MNDAT has requested for the multi-use trail. So that'll be number between twenty-five and twenty-six. If that's approved, so. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Your questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tate to approve the consent agenda as amended, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel. Any further discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda, we're, we're pleased to have Carrie Steinbeiser, Beiser or Bassler?
Steinbeiser.
Okay. From Conway, Duthen, Schmiesing, who does our annual audit report. And I'll leave it up to you, Carrie.
Can I take this off? Just want to start off and say thank you for giving CDS the opportunity to do your audit again this year. We really appreciate that, and we really appreciate all of Joan's time and effort getting things prepared for us, making things go very smoothly and timely to get it completed. So each of you have a packet of the financial statement, the management letter, and then a PowerPoint presentation. And so I will go over the PowerPoint presentation, which does a really good job highlighting the information in the financial statements anyways. If you have any questions, we can turn into the financial statements too if you would like. So the first couple pages in that PowerPoint are the independent auditor's report. And this is what you've hired us to do and gives you our end result. So it really outlines the responsibilities of the city and CDS. So the financial statements are the responsibility of the city's management. And our responsibility as your auditors is to express opinions on your, on your financial statements. So the audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And it's performed to obtain reasonable assurance that the financials are free from material misstatement. So the financial statements are prepared on the modified cash basis of accounting. And it's just a basis of accounting other than GAAP in US, US GAAP. The financial statements are presented fairly, in our opinion, on this modified cash basis. Government auditing standards does require that we give a report on internal controls as well, but I'll discuss that a little bit later in my presentation. So the next few pages are going to cover the general fund. So on page three is your general fund cash and investment balances. So cash balance at the end of 2020 was one million five hundred, or one million five thousand dollars. This was an increase of about one hundred and thirty-six thousand from the prior year. And the increases that you saw in 2019 and 2020 were very comparable between the years. And basically, what that can tell you just by looking at these cash balances is that you're able to cover your current, your costs, capital outlay expenditures, as well as, you know, say for future purchases. So then on the next page, page four, is a comparison over the last five years of your receipts and dispersments, and then that cash fund balance. So in that 2020 column, total receipts and other financing sources was one million three hundred and forty-nine thousand. And then total dispersments and other financing uses was one million two hundred and thirteen thousand. The difference between those is your one hundred and thirty-six thousand change. And then if you compare that to your 2019 levels, that change was one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So very comparable between the years. Again, your total receipts at that one million three hundred and forty-nine thousand, that was an increase of ninety-one thousand from the prior year. And then dispersments, on the other hand, increased about eighty-four thousand from the prior year. And a lot of this has to do with the coronavirus relief funding that you receive. So that money came in to the city and then got subsequently, was spent out. So that's why you're seeing increases in both areas. Also, there was an insurance claim on your squad. So again, that money came in and then subsequently went out again during the year. And I'll cover some more details in the next, next couple slides. But the cash fund balance, so is at one million five thousand. And OSA does recommend, which is, the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor recommends that fund balance be maintained at about thirty-five to fifty percent of your receipts. And where it is at right now is at seventy-nine percent. And that is actually backing out a pass-through grant that goes through the city for the HRA. And then they also recommend that you have at least five months of dispersments as well. And so you're at ten months. And that actually includes your capital outlay coverage. So what that tells me is you have a really strong reserve there in your fund balance. So if you want to turn to the next page, page five. This is a summary of your general fund receipts. So the pie chart will show you, you know, how that breakdown is between your different receipt categories. So your largest sources of receipts are property taxes, and that's at forty percent. And then intergovernmental revenues are at forty-four percent. And then the table at the right shows the last five years spread between the different receipt categories. So property taxes was at five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And this reflects the property tax levy. Looking down at your license and permits was at twenty-two thousand. And this is really based on, you know, the projects going on around town. So in 2019, you can see that was higher, and that included the Casey's project. Intergovernmental revenues was at five hundred and eighty-five thousand. So both 2019 and 2020 were higher years. And that has to do with that, one, the pass-through grant to the HRA. And then the other piece in 2020, it included the coronavirus relief funding in there as well. Charges for services was at ninety-nine thousand. That now, in 2020, that now includes the school reimbursement for the police services. So that's why that's up higher. In prior years, we've kept that in as intergovernmental revenue. So it's just kind of a change in category there. But really, when you compare those police school reimbursements, that was actually down twenty-two thousand from the prior year because of the contract that was agreed upon with the school district. And then fines, fees, and forfeits is at seven thousand. There were less fines issued in 2020 as, and then there was no forfeited vehicle sales in 2020. And then that miscellaneous category, fifty-nine thousand, that includes, a piece of that includes the insurance claim on the, on the police squad. So general fund dispersments is on page six. So in that pie chart, you can see your largest areas with dispersments are the general government, public safety, highways and streets, and capital outlay. And then the table on the right shows the breakdown over the last five years. So general government was at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. There were increases in 2020 due to engineering and legal costs. And then also, there's twenty-six thousand dollars in there that relates to COVID-19 expenses using that coronavirus relief funding monies. Public safety is at four hundred and sixty-one thousand. Not a lot of change from 2019. But there are some larger increases and decreases within that category. For instance, the city didn't have to pay the county for ambulance services this year. But on the flip side, your building inspector costs did go up. And those building inspector costs are based on the projects going on around town. Highways and streets was at one hundred and thirty-six thousand. This was a decrease in 2020. Pieces of it was due to lower tarring and gravel costs. And also in 2019, there were road project costs being paid for out of the general fund. Whereas in 2020, all those project costs were in the, either the water sewer funds, generally. Economic development, so this is that pass-through HRA grant money. So that's just an in and an out. You can see those amounts in 2019 and 2020. And then capital outlay is also a larger area that saw some fluctuations. So one hundred and twenty-five thousand in 2020. And some of the bigger purchases related to Christmas lights, COVID-19 expenses under the coronavirus relief funds, the squad and the equipment, and then the Kubota tractor. So any questions on the general fund? So then we'll turn to the water fund, is on the next two pages. So page seven is your water fund cash and investment balances. End of 2020 was at six hundred and eighty-four thousand. This was an increase of two hundred and eighteen thousand. So pre-2020 road project costs, this fund is in a really good cash position. And at the end of the year, you know, the project is nearing completion now. And then I did see on your agenda that that temporary loan was paid off. So I do want to pull that into play here. So, you know, a large portion of this six hundred and eighty-four thousand will be used to pay your temporary loan. So the portion of the temporary loan related to the water fund was four hundred and ninety-five thousand. And so that cash balance will be down to one hundred and eighty-nine thousand after that is paid off. So then on page eight shows, you know, your operational outlook of the fund. And now this really excludes all your capital outlay purchases, your bond issuances, principal payments on debt. So it gives you more of a clear picture of where those operations are sitting. Operating and non-operating receipts are at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. This was about a seven percent increase in utility receipts. And then operating and non-operating dispersments was one hundred and forty-two thousand. And that is a little, slightly a lower amount than 2019 because in that 2019, the First and Woolen project costs were in that account as well. Apart from that, the costs were very consistent over the past few years. So then the net income loss in that fund, you know, before capital outlay purchases and debt, debt-related items, is one hundred and forty-six thousand. So then that remainder would be used to pay your capital outlay costs, principal payments on debt, or reserve, reserves for future years. All right, so sewer fund, cash investment balances at the end of 2020, we're at six hundred and fifty-five thousand. You know, I have similar, similar comments as the water fund here. Pre-2020 road project fund was in a good cash position. Now with the temporary loan being paid off, that, the portion related to sewers, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that cash balance will drop to one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So on page ten, your sewer fund comparison for your receipts and dispersments. Operating and non-operating receipts were four hundred and forty-three thousand. Fifty-seven thousand of this was Excel rebates that came through. So if you back that out, your revenues were at three hundred and eighty-five thousand. So this was about a nine percent increase in your utility receipts. Operating and non-operating dispersments was at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Twenty nineteen, again, was higher, higher because of the First and Woolen project that was going on. Engineer costs in there. Apart from that, there were some increase, increases in costs with utilities and testing costs. So net income was at two hundred and eighteen thousand. And again, this will be, would be used to cover capital outlay costs, principal payments on debt, or reserve for future years. Hobo Park is next on page eleven. Cash and investment balances here at the end of 2020 was eight hundred and forty-four thousand. This was an increase of sixty-six thousand. And this really fluctuates based on the transfers that are coming out of the Hobo Park Fund and going into some of your other funds. So not unusual there. So then looking at the operational side of Hobo Park. Twenty twenty operating and not, non-operating receipts was at two hundred and sixty-four thousand. This was a slight dip in receipts in 2020, otherwise it was pretty steady. Something to keep in mind was that due to the campground being closed in May, this did drop some. But then it was somewhat offset by that Starry Stonewort. The treatment reimbursement is in there as well. So pretty much evened it out. Whereas operating and non-operating dispersments was at one hundred and eighteen thousand. And you know, that accounts for the drop in wages with the campground being closed in May. And then it's partially offset by increases in professional services for that Starry Stonewort costs, as well as some lights being repaired. So again, that doesn't include capital outlay costs in there. So net income was at one hundred and forty-six thousand, which is very comparable to the prior year. Page thirteen is your future debt service for your bonded debt. This really looks ahead at your total costs of that long-term debt, what's going to be paid. This includes principal and interest on that debt. Really, 2021 is skewed because of that temporary loan. It's at one million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand of total payments. Whereas the next four years, you know, is right around that four hundred and twenty thousand is what you're looking at. And then in 2025, the equipment certificate would have been paid off. So that's why there's that dip in that year. But one thing to keep in mind is that because the road project wasn't completed as, at the time of the audit, we don't have those, that new debt issuance in there either. So that will change next year when you see this graph. It's hard to get the amortization schedule until all the costs are in there, so. And then the next section I'll go over is the compliance section. So there are three additional compliance-type reports to be issued this year. The first one is Minnesota legal compliance, and that's to ensure that you're in accordance with state statutes. There was one non-compliance issue noted, and that had to do with contracts with council members or, you know, contracts for goods and services that can be. So when you are contracting with council members, you do want to make sure that certain procedures are performed prior to the performance of the contract. For instance, a resolution should be put in place prior to that stating, you know, the essential facts, determining that the price is low or lower than if it were obtained elsewhere. And then prior to payment, there should be an affidavit filed with the, with the clerk as well. So something to keep in mind for the future.
Carrie, is, that, that, that just includes goods and services, right?
Right.
That doesn't have anything to do with contracts or anything, right?
It, it would have to do with contracts.
But if it's, okay, I understand.
Okay. If there's like bidding and whatnot done, if, you know, if the project is, it's bid-related, you know, then that's something else. All right, then we issued a report on government auditing standards, and that has two parts to it, internal controls and then compliance. So the first part, internal controls, we noted two material weaknesses. And both of these are very common for smaller cities, difficult to completely go away. The first one has to do with limited segregation of duties, limited personnel in the cash handling position. So if one person can initiate, authorize, approve, and record a transaction, this is when that comes into, into play. So, you know, the best things you can do to mitigate the risk here is just make sure you reevaluate your policy, policies and procedures that you have in place. Implement any necessary policies and procedures that you have determined. And then just continue to have council oversight in those appropriate areas. I mean, overall, I feel like you do a very good job in that, though. Auditor-prepared financial statements, this is required if we prepare the report. And the best thing to do there is just to review the financial statements to ensure that they are accurate under your understanding. And then no instances, instances of non-compliance or other matters that we noted. So then the last compliance section that we do is, for this year, was on the single audit. So this is required when an entity spends seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more in federal awards, which is grants or, and/or loans. So an additional compliance-type audit is required. And in this case, it was surrounding that 2020 road project. And we noted no compliance issues, no internal control over compliance issues either. And then lastly, professional standards require that certain items be communicated at the completion of the audit. Accounting practices are management's responsibilities. There were no difficulties encountered. Any corrections, adjustments have been made and approved by management. There were no disagreements with management. Management has provided us with a letter stating all essential information has been provided. No consultations with other accountants by management, to our knowledge. And that would be similar to obtaining like a second opinion. And then any discussions that management has prior to the audit with us is not a condition of hiring or retaining us as your auditors. And then as far as the management letter goes, we just have one general recommendation there, and that is in regards to the cooperative purchasing venture. And the city should become a member of this cooperative purchasing venture. So when you purchase supplies, materials, equipment of twenty-five thousand dollars or more, you should check out this cooperative purchasing venture to see if there's any, you know, better options there. And it's not saying that you have to go that route, but just so you're considering that as an option. So overall, I feel like things are being done very well at the city. Your funds are, you know, in a pretty good position, given, given the fact that you've undergone this major project. So very nice.
Could I ask you a question, Carrie?
Yes.
Going back to Hobo Park. That, the, the, let's see, it'd be the operating and not, non-operating. Oops, that's, I was thinking about the dispersments. But does that include the, do these figures include the amounts that were transferred to other, I mean, for police protection, sewer water and stuff like that?
They, they do not include it. So if you look, I can point it to you in your financial statements if that would be helpful. Should we take a look at it in there? So in the bigger report, you can see it on page... So on page eighteen and nineteen is essentially your income statement. And then one of the last columns is the Hobo Park Fund. So if you, yeah, if you look down on page nineteen, you can see the transfers out, sixty-two thousand to the other funds. So net income started at the one, one forty-six, and then it went down to sixty-five thousand after all those transfers.
But that fund balance includes those transfers out?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
Okay.
I should say the net income loss does not, but the cash balance, that would include them.
Any questions, or anybody have any questions? Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you, and if any other questions come up after I head out, be sure to reach out, and I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
I know, is Eric, oh, hi. One thing I, I failed to mention is we're changing the agenda items a little bit because we have Eric Fieldseth here from AIS Accounting to talk about the Starry Stonewort treatment for this year. So we're going to move that up in the agenda, so he doesn't get home after midnight or something. So I think the, you know, we've discussed this before. Last year, we did hand-pulling only. And, and we didn't do any chemical treatments this year. Eric and AIS Consulting gave us a suggested management plan, which called for hand-pulling and chemical treatments, three chemical treatments. The applicators that we had in the past were not willing to treat the Marina this year. So we went out and looked for applicators that might be willing to do a chemical treatment. And we got a proposal from Clark Environmental, which is a nationwide company. And they gave us a proposal for doing chemical treatments. I think the council has that packet. And I don't know, Eric, if, if you want to come and tell us what you're thinking and...
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, so, you know, as Clark did provide that proposal, and they did provide you two options for chemicals, two different... options for chemicals, two different chemicals. One was, uh, called Clipper herbicide, and one was, uh, copper, which is what you've used in the past. Clipper has, uh, I'd say less data around it on starry stone wart, um, and copper has a longer history of management. And one thing I would, I would suggest, if you, if you do both chemical, I would suggest copper. Uh, Clipper, it provide, it'll impact other aquatic plants within the channel as well, so you'll get, not only, I, I don't know its efficacy on starry stone wart, there's not a lot of data around there, but it will kill other plants, which you don't want, 'cause that's gonna create more room for starry stone wart to spread. Uh, the copper, at least, is mainly just gonna impact the starry stone wart. The nice thing about doing hand removal first, and then following up with chemical treatments, so starry stone wart's different than a lot of other aquatic plants like milfoil. It's actually a type of algae, so it's made up of a bunch of like individual cells. The chemical actually has to make contact with all the cells in the plant to kill the plant fully, whereas if you're treating like milfoil, the chemicals has to make contact with the plant, and it kinda brings that chemical to the rest of the plant, translocates it. So if you have a lot of plant material, a lot of biomass in the lake, and you apply a chemical, uh, it's gonna kind of basically burn off that top layer where the chemical hits, and you're gonna left, be left with, um, kind of the bottom biomass of the plants still intact. Um, so then you get more regrowth right away, where if you, if you do hand removal, you're gonna remove a lot of that plant material right away, you're gonna get regrowth, but they're gonna be smaller fragments. The idea was the, and you can go in with the chemical, it's gonna have a greater chance of making more contact with all the plants. So kinda continuing that throughout the season to stay on top of it's kind of the goal, whether that's, you know, hand removal and, and two treatments, or hand removal and three chemical treatments, that's, that's probably the most aggressive and best option. Um, but yeah, that's what I would suggest is the way to go. You know, that it starts to work in general is difficult to control. A lot of groups have trouble with it, it's just the nature of the plant at this point, and the amount of options around it, but I'd say the groups that have had the greatest success have been small infestations that have been, um, hand removed. And maybe that's just due to the size of the infestation. Obviously, the larger you get, the less feasible hand removal is, uh, but it has shown to be the most effective actually making, um, year-to-year reductions, where, you know, chemical definitely provides good in-season control, but less year-to-year reduction, so that'd be kind of my recommendation to, to the council.
When you say copper, are you talking about, uh, chelated copper?
Yeah, the chelated copper, yep, the liquid, yep. It'll stay in the water column longer than, let's say, like a granular copper sulfate.
Yeah, Clipper is more broad spectrum.
Correct, yep, yep. Right, which is what we don't want, yep.
Do you know of any DNR permits?
Not in Minnesota. I have seen that the Wisconsin DNR has done some like experimental areas with Clipper, and I don't know where they're at on that, but, um, no projects in Minnesota, to my knowledge, have used copper, or, I mean, have used Clipper, I mean, most have used copper for these products.
What do you, what do you think the dangers of just doing hand pull might be?
I mean, I think it's still a good strategy. Um, the, the downfall, or the, you know, the concern of hand pulling is, obviously, if there's a lot of biomass, you're gonna end up with more fragments, and what the end result of that is, it's, it's difficult to say. I think we're gonna know a lot if we do, uh, an early season survey this year, again in June, that'll tell us a lot about how that hand removal went last year. That would be a good point to kind of, you know, make a decision off of potentially. But, you know, I think, I think, um, hand removal in itself i- is a, is a good strategy. The, the goal will be not to do it when there's just a ton of biomass. It's obviously easier to do if you do it early in the growing season, whereas last year we came in, uh, August, and you can imagine, you know, a season of, of the plant growing, that was much more challenging.
If we did hand removal earlier, uh, would we, you think we'd have time to get the permit from DNR to do chemical treatments, or would you recommend that we go ahead with, uh, asking for a permit for hand removal and a separate permit for?
Yeah, I think the DNR would be pretty open to knowing that your strategy's gonna be adaptive, you know, based on what you're seeing, and you, you, we could talk with, you know, it's Mark Reinweiler, he's the DNR AS specialist for this area, on kind of timeliness of turnaround for the permit, but I imagine it could be a pretty quick turnaround if, especially if we, if we talked to him in advance, that kind of the, the options you're looking at, but. I don't know how that affects any, you know, grant funds you're gonna get from the county, but, um...
Any questions? Uh, if we did hand removal, like, the company that did it last year, did they get the permit, or we used a, a permit that we already had?
Yep, so the company that did the hand removal last year, they're called Waterfront Restoration, so they, they obtained the permit for you through the DNR, and that's kind of, you know, commonplace for them. Well, yeah, they, I think they, I think, um, I think the city actually ended up being the permitee, but they helped coordinate it, which is probably the same way again this year.
And they probably worked them.
Yeah, correct, yep.
We, we also have Ralph Hansen here from the Pope County Land and Resource Management, but I know Ralph, uh, we've got a little bit of discussion here on, on the treatment, and, uh, I think what Eric was saying is that he recommended the, um, chelated copper treatments, if we do chemical treatments, and not, not the Clipper.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
I don't know if you had anything else to add, uh, Ralph, or?
Uh, no, I guess not, sorry, I haven't, I got, you're late and missed, uh, your presentation, Eric, but, uh, I, I think eventually, uh, even if, you know, council decides against this year, I think, uh, a mixed approach of hand pulling and chemical treatment would be the best, long-term.
Yeah, I couldn't quite hear everything you said, Dex.
Oh, I, I just, I said, I, I think the, the approach that Eric recommended of doing both hand pulling and chemical is the way to go.
And I guess, uh, what you're saying, Eric, is that you could tell a lot by your pre-survey and, uh, and by the hand pulling, and, and what direction we would go after that, or?
So I, I think what the, the June survey would tell us is how effective the hand removal was, we did last fall, and, and kind of what the outcome was of any fragments that may have, you know, uh, been a result of the hand removal process. So I think that would be informative, certainly.
The, those fragments, uh, Erica, after the hand removal, is, is there a danger of them being pulled out into the lake, or anything by boats, or?
Uh, so, well, you see, so the care we took last year, we had, um, the wind was blowing in from the main lake, and we set up kind of a, a curtain, so to speak, across the channel, kind of dividing the areas and trying to catch any fragments. I didn't actually notice a lot of fragments being caught up in the curtain, um, but it was there to, you know, catch them if they did. Um, if there were fragments, they were probably pretty small, and they, I think they ended up back in the, you know, the bottom of the lake fairly quickly, but I didn't see a lot of large fragments, I think there's a lot of care taken on, on preventing that, but...
And I, I think we do have drainage out of the west end, right, Randy, that, so there's kind of a, some flow into the marina rather than out, you know, so I would think that would make a difference, too, so.
And we still have yet to see any starry on that far, the far end. It's, it's, where it's been is, for the most part, where it's been, except, uh, you know, this last year, we found some closer to the main lake in the channel.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay. I guess, I guess what I'm thinking, and this is just me, but, uh, if, if we could do the survey in, in the spring, and then see where we're at, and do hand removal if we, if necessary, or if there's nothing to remove, and possibly do a chemical treatment, or, or if we can do hand removal, then we can kind of see how that goes, and, and then do a chemical treatment if necessary, or, I mean, is that, because you'll do post and pre and post monitoring, right?
Correct, yeah, whichever strategy, can, as we start with, it'll be pre and post, so we can know the results of the, whatever strategies we're implementing, and it certainly can inform our next steps.
Does, does that seem like a reasonable approach to?
Yeah, I, no, it does, I mean, there'll, definitely there will be regrowth, you know, as you gone through the season, there will be plant material there. I wish it was that easy of going in one year and not having to bother next, but unfortunately, there will be plant material. Hopefully, it's less than last year that we started, that's the goal. We've seen this trend so far from nineteen to twenty, is less plant material beginning of the year, hopefully, we can keep maintaining that. But, yeah, I would, pre-survey, I would, you know, it's, it's a fair statement saying you'll need a, a hand removal followed by some level of chemical treatment.
Okay, yeah, I, I think in twenty nineteen, we had, uh, that was our most aggressive year as far as chemical treatments.
It was, yep.
And, yeah, so I think we had four that year, right, I think?
Correct, yep, yep.
So, okay. I guess I would recommend, or I'll make it a motion, that, uh, that we contract with, uh, for the hand removal, uh, or the, the survey and, and the hand removal if necessary, and, uh, if it shows that, you know, hand removal isn't, uh, feasible, or, or necessary, that we do, uh, at least one or two chemical treatments, and, uh, and I'll make that a motion, so. Any discussion or questions, or anything?
Excuse me, I wasn't here for the last one, so was it just in the marina area? It wasn't found anywhere else in the lake? It wasn't looked at anywhere in the lake?
So my survey work has been, um, within the channel area, mainly from pretty much the campground, stretch of the campground, the docks. This last year, I, I did do some milfoil, milfoil survey work for the Lake Association, and as I was going out, I did find some further in the channel, closer to where the buoy would be, but not quite that far.
Okay.
Um, so, so within the channel, but closer to the main lake, but...
And I probably should add, too, that the Lake Association is seeking funding to do a, a survey for starry stone wart in the lake, so, um, that'll be interesting to see that data, too.
Yep, so, I'll be working with the Lake Association on that, and it'll be kind of that, outside the channel area vicinity, like a hundred eighty acre area, so.
Okay, okay, okay. Any further questions or discussion?
No, I think, uh, I think that's a good plan, I'll second that motion, and start with, uh, just looking around on the chemical.
And, uh, yeah, and the copper, yeah, the copper, uh, treatment, so, okay. Uh, any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried, I appreciate it, Eric.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks for coming all this way.
No problem.
And helping, and, uh, uh, do we need to do anything to schedule your, uh, your survey, or the, the hand pulling?
Nope, we can touch base kind of one, as, as the time approaches, but I'll plan on June for a survey.
We can touch base with, uh, Clark and Environmental, and, uh, and, uh, proceed with a permit for that also, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
I appreciate it. I just should add, too, that, uh, if we do do any chemical treatments, uh, or when we do them, we intend to notify everybody in the marina that, uh, ahead of time, uh, you know, a week or two ahead of time, that, uh, they can remove their pontoons if they would like to get them out of the water for, you know, a few days after the treatment, but that'll be up to the slip owners, so, and, so, okay. Next item on the, uh, next item on the agenda is Nick Kooz from Woodseth.
Hi, I'm Nick Kooz from Woodseth. I have, uh, some updates on the roadway project from last summer. Uh, there's no pay request this month, uh, waiting for the signed change orders, um, to get from the Minnesota Department of Health, waiting to get Minnesota Department of Health approval, verbally approved, but not, no sign needed, we need the signed copies, we don't have those yet. Contacted MinDOT on a walk-through, um, they're thinking they'll schedule it for sometime in early April. He'll get ahold of, they said they get ahold of Larry and sort out some dates that would work. And then, uh, there's a street sign at the intersection of Trunk Highway twenty-eight and twenty-nine that needs to be checked. It says, uh, Eighth and Main. Yep, uh, it's Eighth and Main is what it says, I believe that's Seventh and Main, so they'll, they'll get that corrected. They think the sign just got installed at the wrong location, so they'll have to move it a block. But that can be taken care of at the walk-through, too, that kind of stuff. Mm-hmm. So any questions about that? Okay. Uh, the other order of business that I have is, um, I brought, uh, updated, uh, cost estimate for the Trunk Highway twenty-nine multi-use trail. We, uh, received, uh, a limited use permit from the Department of Transportation, so the project can move forward. Uh, I updated the cost based on the quotes we got last year, um, so, and then there's a little bit for inflation, too, so that estimate should be pretty close, hopefully. So what I'd be looking for tonight is, um, uh, authorization to go and get quotes for the project, I guess. And then we'd have the project probably, um, completion date in, end of June, to give the contractors some time to complete the project.
I'll make the motion to, uh, start searching, or looking for bids.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, any questions about the project? Okay, I think that, oh, go ahead. Anyway, if you don't have any more questions, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nick. Next item on the agenda is, uh, we have somebody before the council who would like to speak, Derek Blum, uh, from Beachside RV.
Uh, I'm Derek Blum, Beachside RV park owner. Um, we would like to have a live band, which would be a small husband and wife acoustic band, play in our park as a welcome back to the people that are coming back to the park this year. We had a very great year last year, and we have just as many people of, just as many spaces as we have, we have that many people on the waiting list also. as we have, we have that many people on the waiting list also. Uh, it's been a very good thing for our community, all of our people are very, very, very active and this would be a very nice thing to do. Uh, we would try to tone it down as much as possible. I understand there's probably no permit for this, but last year when we tried to do this at eight o'clock or nine o'clock PM, before curfew time, we had gotten called into the sheriff and to the police department many times for noise. So, as a commercial property, kind of, uh, we just would like to have a little bit of entertainment to show these people that we appreciate them and that the town appreciates them and to move forward with a small husband and wife, uh, acoustic band with guitars and a microphone, and I think it'd be great. They're from Bellingham and I'd like to welcome to the area, welcome them to the area. With this, uh, this all started with a family friend of ours that has, that's in a campground over by Villard, they had a DJ and they did some karaoke, uh, and I heard that one over awesome, and then I thought, well, maybe we should do something small like that too, as an appreciation to the people we have. And then I thought about this, I knew this band from ten years ago, I, when I was a DJ, I ran into them all the time. They're really, really nice people and, uh, thought I'd try to bring that to town. If this goes over, great, it would be nice, maybe if Hobo Park or some places like that could do the same thing, to appreciate their people or give, give a little, uh, entertainment to these people, so.
Okay. And so, do you plan to, that'll be over by ten o'clock?
Yes, that's, that's the whole plan. We don't, as, as, we tried a little bit before, that was the plan never to go past curfew and we got called in many, multiple times to the police and the sheriffs, so.
Well, we, we appreciate it, I hope you have a great event and, uh, um, and thanks for letting us know in advance and everything, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Derek. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, Larry Larson and Blaine Peterson from the Starbuck Depot and Museums, and, uh...
Okay, um, well, we have two things, uh, one is a bike service station and, uh, the other thing, uh, just a request for, uh, support, uh, moral support, whatever. Um, I have a short statement, it's gonna be easier for me to just read this than...
Sure.
...ad lib, so, anyway, and some of this may be redundant, maybe you've already discussed this in one, this meeting or other meetings. Uh, the, the character of Starbuck is changing and change is normal, no problem. Uh, the Starbuck Depot is an anchor of the long-term culture of our community. Um, and after the loss of many institutions and businesses in Starbuck, uh, we have few cultural centers left and COVID, of course, has, uh, made that issue worse. Uh, the lake is a great economic asset, uh, but the people here, you know, only in the summer, don't contribute quite as much to the social capital of the community. Uh, and the social capital, of course, is all the organizations and all the things that the people do volunteer for, et cetera. Uh, Starbuck needs a, a cultural center for the people to identify with, uh, so the depot is worth saving and the people that would normally support the depot have passed on, of course, uh, you know, the greatest generation. Uh, these are the people that built Starbuck and saved the depot from demolition. We need your help to keep the depot viable, viable. Uh, your support and encouragement, assistance in planning are needed. A simple example would be facilitating, uh, grants development and the things of this nature. Uh, one way for the city to help all of the not-for-profits would be to hire a city developer, would, a formal education in community development, this could easily be shared or a part-time job position. Another way is just to spend some time during the council meetings focusing on our volunteer groups and how we all view our community. Uh, all the volunteer organizations and nonprofits provide the social capital that will make our community strong and open. They are important and, you know, they did a lot in this town, they did a lot of building. Um, it'll be encouraging to me just to hear that the city council is aware of the needs of the volunteer groups and is willing to assist wherever possible, um, and to develop a relationship where we are partners in caring for our community. In other words, we want a partnership with the city, the city council, uh, we can't do it alone, uh, our numbers are not what they used to be, it's, uh, we need help, simple. And it's help across the spectrum, not just, uh, you know, labor, but, uh, ideas, focusing, et cetera. Want to do the bike?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to add what Larry said, this is the thirty-fifth anniversary year of when the depot, uh, came together, when the people pulled together, rolled up their sleeves and got the ideas going and we had, uh, Lattice Brang and we had a lot of retired people that kind of led the charge, and, uh, we're gonna put out more information about it this year in, uh, publicity in the Starbuck Times and on Facebook to tell the story again, but there's a lot of good things. And, uh, what we wanted to present tonight was an idea, uh, of a bike repair station, now that we have a bike path through Starbuck that's modified, you know, it's, uh, gonna be known as that, uh, and we thought maybe there could be a partnership with the city in purchasing one through the amenities possibly left over from the twenty project, if there is any, or if there's other, uh, sources of funding. We haven't approached any of the volunteer organizations in town yet for that, but we wanted to start here. And it was last fall that I, uh, by accident, uh, found the, the trailhead of the Lake Wobegon system, the bike path in, uh, Holdingport, and it, it was, uh, really interesting how they incorporated a bike repair station, and I saw two people using it, a mom and a, and a child had to put air in their tires before they went for a bike ride. And so I started looking into that, we talked, uh, in our depot group and we thought, well, maybe that could be incorporated here in town. So I put together a small packet, it's informational, and the bullet points on that are, uh, consider possible funding for a bicycle repair station through the amenities package, and it's approximately one thousand five hundred dollars. It's a, it's, uh, security-proof, it's, uh, weather-proof, and it's, uh, something that's in several locations in Minnesota. It's a welcoming gesture from our community for the people that are using that, and the possible visibility in the state tourism brochures, there are advertisements for where you can, uh, tune up your bike or you get it repaired if you're on a bike ride. Uh, we anticipate there'll be more bicycle traffic through Starbuck because of the, the grant and the, and the path. Uh, the Starbuck Depot public restroom shaded picnic area is in use frequently and, uh, it's a, we could have a display area for promoting business brochures and community information. Seems like it's the ideal place for that, a lot of people stop there. It's close proximity to the new path associated with the project, the visibility is great from the highway, it's well-lit during the evening and over nine hours, and there are security cameras there, so that kind of puts a little emphasis on people are watching, if, if there's anyone that would think twice about mischief in that area. So I have the packets here.
Can I make a suggestion? At the VFW every Saturday we do this knee raffle, and we have a lot of organizations that come in, now like our third Saturday of every month is being taken, uh, but like you guys, and I'll broadly, with you, first meal, and, uh, you could have that money in, uh, two or three times. Did you get half of the, half of the juice for that night? It's just a thought, so if you guys come down and the tickets are folded up and go around, everybody wants to buy a ticket, you get half of the money, uh, and if we got something left over here after a road project, whatever, I don't know, it's just something I wanna throw out there to you.
Yeah, and, and groups have been really good to us through the years, we've never been denied funding from the Brangs and...
Oh, I'm sure.
...other organizations have followed their, uh, benefit suppers or whatever have, have been, and it's been perfect timing, you know, it's, it's divine timing how we've been able to, to get money, especially last year with our revenue being down with, of COVID. But we, we thought this would be something to present here as maybe a partnership, a little bit of ownership in, in our property, um, as we're nonprofit and the city can benefit by this, and it does put a stamp of, uh, that we care in our town. So, the information's here and, uh, we wanted to start here tonight.
Has the amenities funds been allocated, spent? Are they gone? Are they never materialized?
Well, uh, that hasn't been decided on yet.
Oh.
But, uh, I was gonna ask, you're proposing to put this on depot property?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the caboose shelter, yeah, right.
And the brochures and stuff like that?
Well, the brochures, you know, we don't have any control over what the chamber might want to put down there, we can, we're just gonna make that, uh, option open.
Mm-hmm.
And the same with the city, if we, if we had a brochure that we wanted to be highly visible, that'd be a place to have it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, put it in a display case and, uh, it's really an ideal location, we see a lot of use there.
And I know different things that you could do, is that that glass dim thing or not glass dim?
Well, that's called a shadow box there, that was one that was donated, but we need to purchase something better.
Bigger, whatever, 'cause I know like, a lot of businesses, you know, if they got something wrong, uh, like Mary Markle is gonna have a big diamond sale, and if I paid you fifty bucks to put that up there for a couple days, uh, I'm talking about continuing, uh, money for you guys, you know, you gotta have something that's gonna, so if you get a little old today, that's gonna be gone tomorrow, so you gotta think about ideas for...
Yeah, we haven't thought, we haven't thought that direction, that's a good idea. The main thing was just to put an idea out there for you to consider, um, you know, there's websites to look at, there's information, you know, here that shows Holdingport, um, it, it seemed to be an ideal situation for us, we've got the space and the need will be there.
And do you guys still do, remember when you first started, probably, well, not that long ago, but, uh, you guys had those big dinners, I know like my neighbors at the Lake Wobegon, they just loved it, you had the table sitting out and maybe you're doing burgers.
Thursday Night in the Town?
Huh? Night on the Town?
Yeah. Well, we, of course, stopped it because of COVID, we had to, but, and we wanna get it going again, uh...
Yeah, and did it slow down those summer or did it stay?
No, no, it grew, it's been growing every year, yeah.
You know, you, you've got that big cover now, some more people sit there, it used to be all off the road, we blocked the road off for it.
Yeah, the area's an asset to the town.
Yeah, well, it is, okay.
You know, it's well-kept and it's, uh, the infrastructure's great. It's just a matter of with all organizations, if you don't have new, uh, people coming in and, uh, you know, the way society is going, there's less people stepping up to volunteer.
And the people using the bikes, uh, they are the young educated, they are the people that really we want in this community, 'cause they are gonna, if they can develop a relationship with us, they'll stay in the community and they'll help us enormously. And it's worth noting as a side option too, uh, you know, biking, uh, it, it might take some of the pressure off the ATVs running all, around town, you know, the younger people, they can be on a bike as opposed to questionable driving activities on ATV. And, uh, the more mature among us, uh, you know, there's e-bikes out now that are gonna be growing share of the market. And, uh, again...
Well, like I said, I, I don't know what things you guys wanna think, but you're certainly welcome to do one or two tires for that VFW and we could even do a park racer, um, and if anybody that rides a bike, I could, I could help cook whatever, these are just ideas.
Yep, but if you guys have some connection to MinDOT or DNR or whatever and you can get us some information on how to do this.
Yeah, it's all available on the website or whatever, you know, that's public information, but we've gotta move on, so if, if you've got something to hand out, uh, please do that.
Should I just leave it on the table over here for you to look at later?
You can hand it out.
You can hand it out, sure. And, you know, and the city will do, uh, whatever we can to cooperate and, uh, and work with you and stuff, so.
Thank you all.
Yep, thank you.
You're right.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a police report, is there any questions on that, uh, anybody Okay. Uh, we're gonna move on to, let's see, before we move on, we have, uh, one police officer, Andrew Peterson, who is resigning, uh, where, where is this? Yep. Where am I at?
Second one.
Second page of the police report. Oh, okay. Yeah, as I said, Andrew Peterson, who was a part-time police officer for the city of Starbuck is, is resigning and, uh, I just wanted to read his resignation letter. It, uh, says, "It is with a heavy heart that I hereby officially resign my employment as a police officer of the city of Starbuck effective March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. I truly appreciate the opportunities the city of Starbuck and the police department have afforded me since I started back in twenty thirteen. I started working for you at twenty-three years old with no law enforcement experience, where I have been able to grow successfully into this career. Not everyone is able to say that they are able to start their careers in their hometown. I will never forget that. I've come to the decision of resigning from the police department due to time commitments, restraints from, from other responsibilities that I've taken on from new opportunities that have come along. It is not fair to the police department nor the city of Starbuck to hold a part-time spot and not be able to dedicate the time to take available shifts. This is the one and only reason that led me to, uh, the decision to resign. I want to take this time to thank you, the members of the police department, the city council, and most importantly, the entire community for allowing me to serve for the past seven and a half years. It has been more than an honor. Again, thank you respectfully, Andrew Peterson." So, very nice letter, so, uh, the police may be looking for other, another part-time officer if they can find him, so. I think next on the agenda is, uh, water and sewer, I don't know Randy if you had anything to, uh, add?
Uh, we did have a water main break this past Saturday, uh, it was on the intersection of Eighth and Bennett Street. Um, we did fix it on Saturday, Ferguson Brothers came down and got it taken care of, everything went smoothly with it. Um, our dock frames are complete from Lowery, so we got the frames picked up, a couple of the end pieces, they just made a few modifications, so we're just waiting for them to get them done, uh, then we'll pick up the hardware and that. Um, we do have the lumber purchased, it doubled in price from last year with everything that's going on, but, um, uh, we did have an issue with the generator at the water treatment plant, uh, kept having a high voltage alarm and it would kick the main breaker out on it. Uh, we had to have, um, total energy out of the cities come out to work on it, they're kind of the factory rep and the other, nobody else could really work on it, so we had to get them out. I did have them service our other two since they were here. So they got that working again, they were worried it was a two thousand dollar actual control for it, um, they thought it was probably, uh, just a computer board that was in it that was a few hundred dollars, so hopefully that takes care of it. Um, we did also have an issue with a heater at the wastewater plant during the cold weather, um, we caught it before there was any major damage and we got it going and another temporary heater in there, so, um, hopefully it keeps working, so, that's all I have. Any questions?
Was there any, uh, indication what happened with the water main or?
It's just, you get ground movement in the winter time and it was just a shear, it's just perfect cut and it, it looks like somebody just sawed it right in half is what they usually are, it just gets under pressure and it just snaps off.
It's just PVC like paper?
This is, was four-inch, um, um, cast iron, which is typically what our brakes are.
Mm-hmm.
It's the old pipe that's in town, so that's why we put plastic in, it's a lot more forgiving.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Any questions for Randy or?
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, city clerk treasurer, Joan Kirk, please, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, the only thing that I have is just, um, Cory mentioned it, that we paid off the temp loan that we had, um, from Eagle Bay for the twenty twenty road project, um, so on the twenty-fifth we paid back that million thirty-five thousand dollars, so that is... So on the 25th, we paid back that million thirty-five thousand dollars, so that is complete. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the committee reports, the planning commission. I just wanted to mention that, uh, we have contracted with, uh, Woodseth for, uh, working on our, our, uh, comprehensive plan for the city. And, uh, they are looking to have a community meeting on, in March and probably another one in April. So we're, we're kind of looking at the 24th of March and so watch your newspapers and look at the website and the access channel. It'd probably be at 5:30, uh, on March 24th. And the comprehensive plan, it, it's just a guide. It's, it's a, it's a, a vision for where the community wants to go in the next 15 or 20 years. And, uh, so as much participation as we could get in that, uh, we'd certainly appreciate it. And, uh, so again, that's, uh, March 24th, uh, I believe at 5:30. If that changes, uh, it'll, it'll be in the paper or, uh, on our website or on the access channel. Next on the agenda is the fire department and Chief Doug Noize would like to, uh, speak, so.
Hello. Um, just wanted to come for you guys and talk to you a little bit about, we did end up, the fire department decided to put on three to bring us back to 25. Uh, talked to you guys a couple of months ago about, or last month about that. So we did do that. We did put a six-month probation period on it with that. So, um, as long as you guys are okay with it, we have them hired, so. You guys have any questions on that?
So you found three, three new?
Yes, we actually had four applicants. So we went to three and, yep, that's what we put on, so.
Okay.
You said you had them on six, six months?
Yes, yep. In case they don't like it, you know, in case something happens or whatever, we can, you know, it's, it's a good thing to have them on before we send them to training. That way they know that they like it versus we used to just kind of send them in and, you know, all of a sudden you're there. It's kind of eye-opening right away when you go into, go into a training and haven't really been part of it yet, so.
So I guess we'd like a motion to approve the hiring of three new firefighters?
I'll make the motion for the hiring of the three new firefighters.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the hiring of three new firefighters and seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is the airport committee and I'm going to turn it over to Joan again for that.
Um, we just want to let you know here that, um, we did get the fencing project that's been talked about in the past for fencing on the east side of the airport. Put on the CIP plan, um, for the state for fiscal year 2022. That means we'd be eligible to do the project with a grant from the state starting in July of this year, 2021. And we'll find out at a later date what their match would be. In the past, it's been 90, 10, or 80, 20, but we'll, no more closer to July.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or discussion on that? And we have to have it in our plan before we can apply for the grant. Is that, that's correct?
Correct.
Yeah. As far as the, uh, old business is next on the agenda, um, we discussed the Starry Stonewall treatment and, uh, and I guess we agreed that, uh, we would, uh, do the hand pulling and the, uh, and, uh, one or two chemical treatments if necessary. Under new business, we'd like to approve the purchases of new Christmas lights that are currently on sale, but are 33% off. This would be for next year. And, uh, we're looking at, at, uh, some LED bucks and, uh, you know, deer and some, uh, red and green Christmas, uh, Christmas trees. The, uh, the, uh, snowflakes that we had last year or this past Christmas, uh, we raised more than enough money to pay for those and we have about $2,700, uh, left over to apply to the new lights. With the purchase of these 12 new lights, it'll allow us to finish the rest of the lights between Fourth and Third Street and, uh, and have some different colored lights on Fifth Street, so. I think it would improve things a lot, so. So we just wanted, uh, council approval on, on purchasing those lights and, uh, I think you had it in your packet and we'll be applying for further grants and, and, uh, donations, uh, to pay for those lights as well. So we don't anticipate it, uh, coming out of this city budget, so. So I'll entertain a motion to
I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the additional Christmas lights.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to, uh, go ahead with the purchase of, uh, 12 new Christmas lights, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is a request by Wayside 4H to hold monthly meetings in the community center at 4:00 PM. Did they say which week of the month or anything, so? I talked with, uh, uh, Chief John Sood and the police would be willing to open up and close, close the community center for him, so we wouldn't have to have somebody come in and do it. As long as we give them a schedule. The one point I guess that we need to discuss is that normally a nonprofit, we charge $75 for a nonprofit to use a community room. They would like to use it, uh, for free. So, uh, I don't know if the 4H, uh, did you have a comment?
Are they aware of the airport building? A lot of organizations use that. I don't know how many people they have, but would that be a better bet?
Yeah, I didn't, uh, think of that and it might be a good alternative, I don't know.
Yeah, I kind of thought of that, but I didn't know if it's busy on a weekend. Might be the Sunday afternoon might be a busier time for them. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I suppose if it, if it's on a weekend in the summertime or something, uh, you know, it's a possibility.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Then they could kind of come and go as they, as they needed and didn't have to have somebody open and close it.
Was that, was that discussed with them, Joan, or?
Uh-uh.
No, okay. Okay.
Ted, what do you think about that?
It's 4:00 PM. I think if you're late enough, you aren't going to get many people that are flying that late or anything coming in to use it. I don't, I don't see a conflict in it.
Well, I guess we, we could have some further conversation with them and, and see if that would be a possibility before we make a decision on it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd make a motion. We table it, uh, for the time being and until we can, uh, maybe by next council meeting, we can have a, have a clear idea of what the alternatives are or whatever, so. So I'll make that a motion to table it for, for the time being.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion from Gary Swanson to table it, seconded by Councilman, uh, Tafe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is to extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-19 to till April 30th.
I'll make the motion to extend the COVID emergency declaration for COVID-19 till April 30th.
I'll second that.
So, you second? So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-19 till April 30th, uh, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Balko. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is we have a, uh, a letter of agreement from the union to, uh, for employees, uh, of the city to donate some of their sick leave to, to a, uh, to a fellow employee who is going to be on maternity leave, uh, fairly soon. So, uh, the, the union has agreed to it and I just need the council approval to allow a one-time donation of a personal accrued sick leave to, uh, to an employee that is going on leave. Be up to what was it, one week, I think, or whatever. So I think it's in your packet, the approval or the letter agreement, so. Is there any questions or discussion on that? If not, uh,
I'll make the motion to approve the one-time donation of sick leave.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the, uh, letter of the agreement with the, uh, union to allow a one-time donation of, of accrued sick leave, uh, to another employee. And, uh, seconded by Councilman, or Councilwoman, uh, Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. In your packet is a revised, uh, agenda request for the city council. If, if someone would like to come before the city council, like, uh, like Blaine and Larry did and Derek, uh, we're going to leave it open at the beginning of the meeting, right after the consent agenda for, uh, for a maximum of three people for three minutes. And, uh, if you'd like to, to appear before the city council, we have a, a form that we ask that you fill out seven days in advance, giving your name and address and, uh, and what the subject is and, uh, and file that with the city office, uh, seven days before the council meeting. And it'll be first come, first served, so. I think that's in your packet. Uh, is any, any of the council, uh, people have any questions on that? If not, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve that, uh, procedure and request form.
I motion to accept this, uh, adjustment to the agenda request.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Hanson to, uh, approve the revised Starbuck agenda request form and, and, uh, procedure, uh, which is posted at the bottom of the, of the request form. Seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, MINDOT LUP, uh, limited use permit that, uh, Nick Coos from Woodseth mentioned. This basically is what MINDOT requests if we're to move ahead with a multi-use path on the west side of Highway 29. And, uh, is there any questions regarding that or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 03.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve Resolution 2021 dash 03, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Last item on the agenda is, uh, at the last, uh, planning and zoning meeting on last Tuesday, Jill Hanson, uh, as you know, resigned from planning and zoning and was, was sworn in at the planning and zoning meeting. And, uh, we interviewed candidates, uh, three candidates for the planning and zoning, uh, committee and, uh, there was a unanimous decision to approve the appointment of Brett Bowser, which the planning and zoning commission is recommending to the council for, for a term on, to fill the complete Jill's term on planning and zoning. And, uh, so, you know, if there's any questions, uh, on that or?
I'll make a motion to approve Brett Bowser to the planning and zoning committee.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a, uh, motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the appointment of Brett Bowser to the planning and zoning, uh, commi- commission, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That completes our agenda and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. So we have a, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn, so the meeting is adjourned.